But significant portion is older demographic, just like Miss H said. Still strong for connecting with diverse group of people. Now, what's their typical user behaviour? Connecting with personal networks, joining groups based on interest. Personal, then when I talk about joining groups based on interest and eh eh. Entertaining, discovering local. Business, emphasis on communities, our business promotions, emphasis on local business promotions. Now, in terms of strengths, we're looking at versatility, looking at large user base. Looking at powerful advertising tools. But now, in terms of weaknesses, organic reach. How many people see your post without paying for business pages and below? Now, let's move on to Instagram, what it is. Highly visual platform focused on photo and short video sharing. Primary content, photos, short videos, stories, da da da. Main audience, younger demographics, I feel for um Instagram, the audience is actually versatile. This is just for the major demographic. Well, you have younger demographic. Eighteen to thirty-four, very active, strong for lifestyle, fashion, food and visual brands. Typical user behaviour, visual discovery, following influencers, engaging with visually appealing content, shopping. Now, business use, excellent for visual branding, influencer marketing, showcasing products, running visually driven ads. Emphasis on visually driven ads and engaging with a younger audience. So if you're using Instagram for business and then you're running ad with a quality. With a visual visually appealing content. You're really not harnessing the best of the platform. Or even as a content or even as a social media manager, or even for your personal brand. If you're running, if you're doing Instagram, you're posting on Instagram, you're not using visually driven um visually appealing content. That's like a loss, that's where you know your strengths. So, let's move on to Twitter, now known as X. What it is, a micro blog blogging platform focused on short, realtime updates and conversation. So, for example, if you're a writer and you want to harness your strengths in writing, Twitter is a good place to be. Ready for bands nevertheless. Then in terms of primary content, we have all of this. In terms of audience, we have junkies, we have professionals, we have public figures, and we have those interested in real-time events and discussion. Now for business use, we have real-time customer service, breaking news updates, public relations, engaging. So, if you're using, if you're here for your personal brand, you're looking to build your personal brand sometime in the future. Twitter is a place that wants to strengthen in terms of the public relations. Engaging in trending topics and driving traffic with timely content. Strengths, realtime communication. So if you're a brand that wants to communicate with your audience in real-time, you should have a good presence on. On Twitter. Direct engagement with customers and public figures. Weaknesses, content has a very short lifespan, very amazing. Also add X zone of the. Don't call it toughest, zone of the um very strong platform. If you're able to grow on X, you can really grow anywhere. Now for LinkedIn, we have the world largest professional networking sites. Primary content, all of this. Um, business use, B B market, recruiting, taught with the professional networking, employee advocacy. Now, strength, highly effective for B two B marketers, as business to business, professional and then. Our TikTok, short form video given by trends, music and creative content. Main audience, predominantly young and younger millennials, highly influential for cultural trends. So with strength, we have variety potential, but that does not mean sales. So if you want to build a good social media presence, good brand awareness, or want to build, have a strong awareness, you should be on TikTok. But that does not mean if you want to generate leads, you should be on TikTok. Or should I say? It would help you with one goal, will not help you with another goal. That's one thing you want to um note as well. Both as a social media marketer or a communication specialist in the future, or even for a personal brand, right? So massive reach with short engaging video, also the potential, part of the potentials and strength for TikTok. High, but requires highly creative, authentic and fast-paced video content, which can be challenging for brands. Talk live till today, I can't really understand it, but then. It is what it is. Now, defining social media goals. Hmm, just like any marketing activity, the social media efforts need clear goals. Now, that's why at the beginning I was trying to say, we don't forget those things that were listed out, because those things can form. Pillars for most of the goals that I'll be highlighting here. Or yeah, I want to form pillars, most of the goals that will be highlighted here. Just like any marketing activity, social media efforts need clear goals. Without goals, you wouldn't know if your time and effort. So your goal should be smart, specific, measurable, achievable or attainable. Relevant and then time bound, just like every day-to-day goal. So with specific, they're looking at ad figures, include figures. Very important and also a side note for you as a social media manager to be a communication specialist, a marketing professional in the future. When you, when you set your specific goals, when you set, when you are on the specific aspect of your smart goals. Try to actually work with something, like if possible, try to under promise. If possible, try to under promise, don't try to work with all of the hype. Um, yeah, for example, a page, you manage a page, the page gave you thirty percent increase in the month. And then you want to set go for another page, and then you want to set for thirty percent. I don't actually recommend that. Different pages. Sorry, different pages, different business, different direction, different goals, even different assets are available. So it's also important that when you set your smart goals for your brands, your businesses, or. The one that you've been marketing, try to own that promise in terms of your specificity, twenty percent. So in terms of measurable, achieve a five percent engagement rate on Facebook posts. Okay, so in terms of measurable, I would say um also try to under promise. Social media algorithms can really be um fleeting. They are not, some days are not as clear as some days, and some days when a platform is undergoing some new updates, some new changes. Your measured goals or just a measurable aspect of your smart goals may not be as you had experienced in other time, in time past. So try to always under promise also when you're talking about measurable goals. Then attainable. Now, for your attainable, that has to do with time, that's okay, it's time bound, I was looking to talk about. Okay, for time bound, it's important also that when you're setting your smart goals for social media. So when you're setting your smart goals for your business and your personal brand, you should try as much as possible to give room for. Different phases of that brand. Take for example, you're starting out with a brand that is just like you're literally the first. Made in social media manager or social media marketer on that brand. It's important that you don't over promise now that in less than one month, you'll get hundred followers. And then in less than one month, that the platform in itself is not even like you're having issues in terms of understanding how that business is fit. How that business fits into that platform. So in terms of time bound goals for your social media. Always try not to put them at three months. I try to advise that to everybody I see heading to social media as a career or communication in full, in full speck of. Things, try to keep your time bound to over three months, just to give room for things to happen, just to give room for different phases of the. Um, like see different phases of the platform. Because now, take for example, if, let's say he manages brand, one week, ah, your. Your tweet went viral, you feel that's always what it's like. And then you know how social media works, variety is not always predictable. It gets, for TikTok, it may be more predictable, but for other social media platforms, it's not always that predictable. So when you set goals that, social media goals, and you have to add time, try to keep them at the bracket of three months. I would advise that, just to give room for highs, lows, alright? For relevant goals, for relevant aspect of your smart goals, generate fifty qualified by leads. From LinkedIn this quarter. Now, this will, if this will entail you going extra miles beyond just your normal day-to-day content strategy. You may even, you may even ensure that you reach out to communities, or even reach out to individuals, or even reach out to individuals in that community, you understand? I just want to just, this points are not really needed here, but I'm just adding them just more like tips. Though we still have a lot of commercials to have later, but I'm just adding them as tips, so as you just have them somewhere at the back of your mind, when you remember. Smart goals, when you remember you need to set a goal for social media, all of these little things I'm adding here, you can just have them in my back of your mind, because it's very, very important. Like the secrets of this industry, so you don't have a situation whereby in a bid to think that it's your personal kind of smart goals that you're setting. You're setting Instagram followers, twenty percent in less than one month. And then one more time, your client is asking you, where are my twenty percent followers? And then you don't have anything to say. So it's good to give yourself time, at least three months, so that you can understand phases of businesses or phases of that page, okay? All those clients that come to you, and then they tell you, ah, all my business, all my page should grow in five hundred. I want five hundred followers in less than a month. If you have magic that you can do, you can accept it. But then, just like I am saying here, it's important to give three months timeframe, okay? Now, common social media goals for businesses, just like I, just like we said, we um looked at in the beginning part of. Brand awareness, most of the brands on social media, they want to reach more. Consumer, they want people, they want their brands, first to define the minds of people. We want to make sure that people know about them, they want top of mind awareness, they want to be at the top of, at the top of everybody's mind, okay? That's one of, that's one of the goals businesses come to achieve on social media. Another is to attract lead, they don't just want to be on your mind, they want you to come, they want new people to sign up to their website. Let people to sign up to their apps, they want new people to sign up to join on their community, they want new people to buy their books. They want new people to buy their products, so all of that encompasses lead generation, okay? Now for website traffic, they don't just want to just be dancing on TikTok, they don't want people to just come to their TikTok, and they know TikTok comments can be, oh, let me not reference that now. Or they don't just want people to just come to their comments and drop nice comment, they want to actually get to their, get to their web, link in buying. They want their websites to generally lead, they want their websites to, like, they want things to be happening on their website, they want people to be buying their products that they have exhibited on their website. Okay, so, and finally, they also want to make sales. They just want, as much as you may just go around, you just see businesses, they have hired this influencer, they've hired an influencer, you think it's just about influencer marketing, they want to do. No, in the bigger spectrum of things, they want those partnerships, they want those collaborations to be able to come, to over to combat. Website traffic, that's why you have some influencers, when they are marketing for brands, they tell you about coupon, use this my code, use that my code. All of those things are the end goals, not always about the influencers, the influencers just want to just tell you a story about their life, no. All of those things are, and in such a way that, where like and um something, they call that, I wasn't the, the principle for that. It really is, yeah, know, like, trust, and then buy. So at first, they want you to just know them, you see them just um showing you like, telling you what they are all about. Um, and then over time, they want you to, that you're knowing them, to like in them, eh, trust. And then you now get buy from them in the end. That's the know, like, yeah, know, like, trust, buy, um, principle. And also customer service, customer support, they can't reach everybody that buys their products from coming from full traffic. So with social media, they're able to achieve that, if you send a DM, they want you to reply you. If you send a comment, they want you to reply, you don't want to make sure that they are, um, consumers feel a part of the brand. Don't make sure that their consumers feel, um, feel like they are being heard. Again, they want to make sure that their consumers feel the best experience they can. That will all happen through you, like the social media manager, communication specialist, or even for your own personal brand. As a personal brand, let's say you're using social media for personal brand, people that like you, they want to be able to know that they can assess you. Don't want to know what you're like, okay? So that's the customer service and support aspects, people you own brands use social media for. And finally, community building and engagement, besides just, just like what the Naja girl does. Besides just um everything that she's all about, she wants to build a community of women, she wants to make women feel at home. Wants to be that support system for women, so that's um some other goals that. Businesses and individuals set for social media. And now we have identifying the target audience on social media. Now, before you can create content or choose any platform, you also pretty much know who you're trying to reach. Yes, just like I said when I started us, all game with your personal, your personal page. Sorry, so with your personal page, it's a different thing. To personal page, you can decide, oh, I'll follow my sister, follow my brother. Follow my friends, but with businesses is different, you don't just follow anybody you want to follow. Okay, so, um, that's for those that, that's for the following aspect of social media, then the followers aspect. How do you identify target audience? Why is I just, I guess, audience crucial? Now, it's crucial because the platform choice, how to decide which social media platform your audience actually uses. Example, if your audience is family Gen Z, TikTok is a better bet than LinkedIn. And also, it's also um depend on the kind of business that you're into. If you're into the professional aspect of Gen Z's, you will still consider LinkedIn, okay? Unless, for example, you sell a tool, you sell a particular tool, there's this tool that I was trying to get accustomed to today, Komodo. Komodo Dex, it's a tool that helps you screen record, or whatever you're doing on your laptop or your browser, or just your system at large. So if you're trying to sell something like that, yeah, it sounds more like you're on, let's say, your, your audience. The audience basically wants to reach is TikTok. Yes, as much as you try to look for a way to um make your content to fit into the. Platform, you also need to be on LinkedIn, alright, just to show that professional aspect of your business. Because it's also important that businesses have different voices for different platforms, most of the times. Now, for example, I currently have a real estate firm I work with, where I help them with their social media strategy and additional communications. On LinkedIn, I'm more, I say on LinkedIn, on X, I'm more do, on X, I'm more down to X. On X, I have features whereby I'm quoting some people's content around real estate, I'm just giving my, giving our, um. One, one or two cents, but on Instagram, it's more straight, it's more straightforward. We have most of brand communications, most of direct communications, even though we do those directions on Twitter as well. But on Twitter, we try to fit into the platform, to make sure that, um, as, 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 like, beyond just, um. What we want to sell, or beyond just who we are, we are engaging with the platform, we are aiming for the platform. So it's also important to, that social media manager, that when you start out with different, or when you start to manage different platform, you try to fit into those platforms at a point. For like for TikTok, you may try to make your content more um viral centered, or more trend centered. Or more dance centered, but then, nevertheless, you still try to put out direct communications. But for every platform you enter, for every platform you use, or you decide to use for your marketing, you need to be able to. Tune into that platform, to speak the language of that platform, to speak strengths of that platform. So if you're LinkedIn as a business, if you decide to be on LinkedIn as a fashion brand, it's not a bad thing, even though LinkedIn may not be a place for you to try. But then if you want to have a presence or anything for the sake of, when your investors want to look for you, or just high-end people when they are looking out for you. Want to fit into that platform, you don't want to use your um Instagram voice or LinkedIn, okay? So, that's one thing you need to note. For content creation, guys, what kind of content to create, which I just said. No, for content creation and your target audience, now. For example, your target, your left, last time I talked about Facebook, how they said Facebook is for the lower, is for the, um. Let's say, uh, uh, older generation and all of that, what kind of content did they feast on? Then they don't mind long-form content, that's why you see most of Facebook content are. And what you, you're being skip for what twenty minutes, on, on Instagram, they probably would have scrolled past you or TikTok. And I said, so with those platforms, they help you understand, um, understanding your target audience, helping you understand what kind of content they consume. For the TikTok generation, which is the general generation, which is, um, snap. Quick, um, content, you notice that most of, um, TikTok content, most of their content is snackable and quick as possible, okay? Messaging helps you tailor your language and visual style to the name of them. So when you're going to understand your target audience, you know what kind of voice you want to use. Now, your target audience are professionals, okay, as much as on social media, nobody is there to actually, who are speaking very, very. Clear English, text or translation, on LinkedIn, sorry. You, um, unless on Instagram, I know people making personal comments on Instagram, people use Instagram for professional purposes. But then, the tone on Instagram is different from the tone on LinkedIn, the tone on LinkedIn can be as, I'm here, here, here to announce, da, da, da. On Instagram, it should be more calm, it should be more, um, it should be toned, to be toned in a different way, okay? Because the audience on those platforms are entirely different. Then for your art targeting, essential for running effective page. Um, social media campaigns, when you understand your audience, be able to know what their behaviors are like, what their interests are like. And it will help you to know the content that you put together when you want on ads. Then also for resource efficiency, preventing from wasting time and money on platforms or content that won't reach your ideal audience. So if I hear that my, my audience are luxury-based people, I know what kind of content to do, I know that my content has to, like, a lot of thought, a lot of. Um, a lot of, a lot of strategy should have been going into my content, I know that my content should depict the fact that the product is luxury. Okay, and then when I'm dealing with a day-to-day consumers, where luxury or outlook is not important, I would not want to put that into root. You get, so it's very important that you understand the targets, and that even help you sell a social media manager to know what kind of content to do. The audience are, just like a, a midnash of Gen D, want, want, want to know, want to make sure that your content is as creative as possible. They are not boring in terms of lens, sometimes it depends on how engaging it is, it can go, like, lens may not matter. But then you just, just make, just want to make sure that you understand what their interests are like, their behaviors are like, and all of that. And in, uh, moving forward, I'll still give more details on that, because that's one of the important things you have to make, calling the buyer persona. Your buyer persona, okay? So how to identify your target audience, basic characteristics, their age, their gender. It's even, it's even, it's even very, um, it's even very, very easy now. So, a class of business, can just go to, um, Chagipity or Jenny AI and just act. For this class of product, I want to sell, and then you get to me, you likely get a list of all these things compared to the back in the case. Where, um, I'm highlighting, okay, to look from, that is a fashion brand, and also highlights to do with this age group. Not at least that, basic characteristics, what are ages like, the income level, AI that we have now, once you want, once you are. Once you wonder the business you're trying to manage, and just go, um, over there and then get. Get an idea of what your target audience will look like. Now, I want to talk about demographics, talking about their basic characteristics, age, gender. When marketing is female, your marketing is male, they are completely different, their location, they in Lagos, are they in Abuja? Do you want to tune into what's happening in Lagos, when you want to connect with them through content, that's the same plans for each of your targets, okay? For example, some things can happen in Abuja, and then you know that your audience are based in Abuja, definitely tune to that. Yeah, so that's why, that's why it's very important to do your target audience and know these basic things, okay? Their income level, you know, what kind of content, what kind of jokes, and everything, imagine you're doing with a, along well. And you have a lot of money, or you're in the high class. Maybe it's the, um, Twitter, Twitter trend, they are the nipple babes, or nipple baby. You know what kind, you know what kind of content that you, that you put out for those kind of audience, okay? Then for education, you don't want to make jokes that are not relatable. There's a platform that I talk, that's called Career Booty, they're like a professional platform, but it tries to make, um, corporate slang, corporate. Corporate wahala, um, as, as possible, that's what them, they've decided to do, then they're going to understand their target audience. So, no kind of and occupation, okay, now how? To find it, look at your existing customer data. In social whereby there's no existing customer data, just like I said, you can use AI as. As, as, um, as much detail as you can, because, um, basically, AI is data, so people are. Product, or what have been done somehow, that AI has suddenly gives us, so something you can still use to get your existing customer data. In market research, what's insights from your current social media followers, so that's for your demographics. Now, your psychographic, that's the, now, how they, how they behave, how they respond. So with that, you want to understand, um, interests, hobbies, values, lifestyle, personality traits, opinion, pain points, expressions. And all of these things are not what you know, sorry, ordinarily, unless you know the person one-on-one. But thank for, um, platforms where you've been able to, you just go out there, based on the product that you're selling, or what your brand is about, or what your brand is about. You can get most of these details. So how to find it, surveys, interview with existing customers, social distance, that's much information. Yeah, which I can also take your computer analysis, you're studying a detailed product, I know everyone is studying a detailed product. You can as well just go through their comment section, go through their audience, maybe followers, just go see what their followers are like. You see their followers pages, that will give you more in the understanding of what their circumstances are like, analyzing contents that they engage with. We have behavior, how that, which website do they receive, what content do they consume, what social media platforms do they use most, and what time of the day. Are they most active? Hope we are still, um, together fifty-three. Alright, alright, so I want to try to round up as possible, so that, um. You can, um, like, so that you can, everything that can be retained, because I'm a person that doesn't like too much promotion at the same time, so I want to transfer school. To round up soon as the key, so what website do they receive, what content do they consume, website analytics, da, 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 da. So, just like I said before, buyer persona, creating a buyer persona, now what's a buyer persona? A buyer persona is a semi-physical representation of what your ideal customer, based on market research. Or real data about your existing customer.
Hi guys, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, my, um, my wifi went off, I didn't even realize, so, so sorry, apologies. Please, at what point did you stop hearing me, I was so impacted, I didn't even know when I was.
Olakisi, please mute your mic, noisy.
Alright, Isaac, our point was, I, um, like, I know.
Please mute your mic.
I'm sorry, um, our point was, I, please.
Six, you stopped six minutes ago, like, six minutes ago.
Okay, I think I'm gonna be able to figure that out, but, um, our point, our point where we, I want to get feedbacks.
Um, the buyer person.
Okay, I want to expand it on buyer persona, right, please don't drop in, one drop in the group that the class has resumed. So that the rest of the, um, African dialects are joining, okay, please, as quick as possible. Alright, so, um, I, I know, someone may be able to drop that message for me on the group.
Yeah, someone did already.
Okay, okay, you can get unable to do that as well, so that, um, they just join you while I continue, thank you for being patient. For me to join back, okay, so, um, yeah, when I was moving on to. I, in my mind, I had moved on to buy, um, the next module, was the last, now the buyer persona. I would just say that, um, you will have more than one buyer persona for each brand, whether it's a personal brand or. Your, um, businesses or a business that you're managing, because once you start to manage a page or a business, you become that business. If you're a, if you're managing a real estate page, you become a realtor, literally, you think like a realtor, you want to act like a realtor, so that you can communicate. To, um, the audiences of a realtor, right? So that's just one thing you have to know, and then you have as many buyer personas as possible, sometimes you have four to five, let's say, this lots of it at four to five. You have different buyer personas for different brands, which will help you understand what their content consumption will look like, and even how to market them. Alright, so moving over to the, what we finally have, which is a computer, computer analysis of social media. So most of the time that I have clients, I'm asking them, okay, who are your competitors on Instagram, they don't have any competitor, every customer or most businesses will say that. But then it's not for you as a marketing personnel, so now use your eye, your third eye to go through Instagram pages, see brands that. Doing what the brand wants to manage or what your personal brand looks like, and then just get, do a rough analysis of what they look like. Identify their strengths, understand their weaknesses, and then see the loopholes in what they do. Which can become opportunities for your brand, and then even selling points for your brand, okay? Why is con- why is, why is it important to conduct a counter analysis on social media, first thing, to identify best practices. Now, see what's working well, you just came on a brand, you're trying to put together your content, and then address, put together your content strategy. When you've understood what is happening on the brand, what is happening on the, um, what is, what is happening in the industry, what is success like in the industry. Then when you use one of that band, you're able to now define what direction or what the brand can do from the points that they are. Now that thing is to spot gaps and opportunities, now you've gone through a brand that looks like the brand your, your customer wants to achieve or wants to look like. Now you see, ah, this computer, this one person is not doing well, you can just be, that's what you now do well, and that becomes your own selling points, okay? When there's an unmet need in the market that you can feel, understand your niche, most of buyer personas, by looking at what their audience, how their audience engage with their content. How their audience relates to those content, you can make it easier for you to build your own buyer persona, build your own, um, or your target audience look alike, can be like. Then benchmark performance, compare your social media performance against, against, yes, the follower growth, the engagement growth, the content frequency. You can even use it to know how frequent they post in the industry, so that you can even be able to advise your clients on how to do better on the brand that you're managing. Avoid mistakes, learn from their failures, let's say there's a crisis in observed that, as you went, and you're going to their page, there's a crisis that happened on their page. And then how did they handle that crisis, if that, you can be able to understand how to, um, deal with your own as they arise, okay? So how to conduct a basic social media quantitative analysis, identify your top three to five competitors, alright, so let's just do a quick, um. I've got a quick exercise, I just want to just, um, raise up, raise up their hand, raise up their hand, just name five food bloggers. That you can, uh, say, I want to start a food blog, and I want to identify my competitors, I need five, I need one person to mention those five food bloggers. I can move to just, I can even move to just use it to tell you, so that's not what the industry is like, quickly, 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 we're out of time. It's more than, we have spent more than, ah, okay, yeah, all you have to do, please, please, um, unmute yourself.
Yeah, so we have, um, there we have a kitchen lover, we have, if he's kitchen.
Yeah.
We have, um, there's Timmy, I can't remember her name.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have, um, um, this apollo doctor's wife.
Okay.
Yeah, then we have. Let's say, create this bug.
Hmm, create this bug, doesn't fall under that. Blowing, but then it's fine, you already mentioned for the.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank, thank, that's, that's a, that's a comprehensive list of five food bloggers that. Let's say, so the brand is trying to look into food blogging, you can look to, um, analyze those five competitors. So find their social media profile, search them, search for them on Facebook, Instagram, X, LinkedIn, TikTok, the platforms relevant to your industry. Now, these are the basic information that you can collect when you search for them, the platforms they use, their follower counts, their posting frequency. That's how often do they post, three times a day, two times a week, five times a week, seven times in a week, fourteen times in a week, you want to be able to highlight that. And content types, what content type do they post, images, videos, texts, carousels, you want to identify that, the what are their engagements like? Average like, on one post, what's the average like, like, you want to check that, calls to actions, how they get able to have conversations. How they get, what are their conversations like in their comment sections, you want to highlight that, now their audience interaction, do they respond to comments and messages? How quickly, and what's their tone, now, though this tone is still, we are just learning all of this, it's not like you're seeing, you're going to copy and paste them, okay? Now, paid ads, invisible, um, I'll try to make, I'll try to have these paid ads aspects. There's some, there's a way you're able to see the art, I can tell that I need, I just created that, so it reminds me before the end of this, um, social media class. If I'm able to get a reminder, I would put out, I would give you, and then I like, a way it can identify paid ads from consumers. Cause it's not going to be readily available on their page, okay, so someone can just note that and remind me, maybe in the next session and I'll start, or just remind me on the group and then. I'll try to get that available, okay, so we have analyze and draw conclusions, written out all of those thoughts, now analyze, what are they doing well? Consider A as better video content on TikTok, what are their weaknesses, consider B has low da, 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 what opportunities exist for you, no one is. No one in our niche is constantly posting educational content on LinkedIn, the one on our niche has a social media presence on TikTok. The one in our niche, in our, in our niche answers comments very quickly, the one in our, in our niche is sarcastic, that's if, that's, that's, that's what you want to be known for. Then two tip, why do advanced pay tools for quantitative analysis, you can start with manual observation, simply visit their profiles regularly. And notes down what you see in the spreadsheets, now, moving over to your weekly assessments. Scenario, you're a new social media manager for Green Roots, a small ethical online plant, plant shop. That sells unique houseplants and offers better plant care workshops, the target audience is urban millennials, ages twenty-five to forty. Who are new to plants, parenting and value sustainability, Green Roots currently has an Instagram account with some followers, but no clear strategy. They are meant to impress the K K way as hard to relay the strategic groundwork for their social media presence. Your task, based on the Bitcoin learning material, prepare a detailed strategic online, strategic online, um. A strategic outline, sorry, for Green Roots' social media efforts, social media role and platform analysis. Explain to Green Roots founder in simple terms, the role of marketing within their overall digital strategy. Provide two specific ways social media can support their business through, E G, da, da, da. B, analyze two specific social media platforms, choose from Facebook, Instagram, X, LinkedIn, TikTok, that will, that you believe will be most effective for Green Roots. For each chosen platform, justify your choice by explaining why it's a good fit for the target audience, why it's a good fit for their content type. And what's one, and what's one primary business goal? Your task continues, define smart goals for them, then their target audience and home to analysis. You have described Green Roots target audience, and then we have identify one hypothetical on potato for Green Roots on social media. I don't want, this is an example, I don't want to see urban jungle plots now, where you answer your own. This is what you would look for when conducting a basic social media analysis for this content on Instagram. For each, explain why this mission will be valuable for Green Roots' strategy, so, in summary. Social media marketing is a strategic tool to achieve your business goals, strategic smart goals is essential for tracking social media success. Understanding your target audience is fundamental for creating relevant content and choosing the right platforms, smart measurable achievements and relevance. Time bound, thank you, so, let's have questions, let's have conversations, I just do that for the next four minutes, so that I can wrap this up by twenty thirty. Yeah, so Hamza, go ahead and unmute yourself, and let me have that, I want that to be as quick as possible, I want this to be out of here by eight thirty, okay? So Hamza, unmute, let's go.
So, my question is, under the guide to identifying, um, one's target audience, you mentioned that one should look at one existing customer data. And I've interviewed like with those existing customers to get their, um, psychographics and demographics. What if the brand is just starting out, do we just use, um, the hypothetical something? Or we should use other people's existing data, like other brands' existing data, also, under the measurable aspect of smart goal definition. How do we track the growth, like, the way you number it, like twenty percent, um, fifty percent, how do we convert the goals into numbers?
Okay, so Hamza, your question was a lot, I can't even lie, I, I lost track of what you want me to answer, I can't even lie. So can I get like, in, um, like, as summarized as possible, what's your question is again?
Okay, so the first one is, assuming the brand is just starting out, how do they get the specific data? Do they use the data from other existing brands, that's the first one, the second one is, under the smarts, um, goal something. You said we should make our goals as measurable and time bound as possible, how do we measure the exact, um. Goal that we want, like, how do we say this is going to be twenty percent, how do we know it's supposed to be thirty percent, and, yeah.
Oh, sorry, being speaking, I've been muted, so sorry about that, alright, so, does anyone want to help me to answer the first question? Because I know I did mention how to understand your target audience, even when the business is starting out, does anyone, quickly, 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 quickly.
Um, okay.
Yeah, so go ahead, Ruffians.
Yes, good evening, ma'am, you mentioned that the business is just starting out, and it doesn't have any existing data, you can just ask E I to get the data.
And also. Alright, okay, yeah, that's one way I mentioned, and also, one of the other ways I mentioned was your competitors as well. You can be able to analyze from your competitors, what, what their audience are like. I said something to see your competitors, doing a, um, um, a thorough understanding of their audience, probably you see their pages, you see their. Um, like, just do a, do a severe stalking, yeah, it's not really stalking, it's actually allowing the market to understand your bias behavior, okay? So, use your competitors to understand, use, use AI to understand, and also, if, let's say the person is starting out on Instagram. If person has any audience that's existing, if person could have had offline audience and does not have online audience, the person has offline audience, you can use offline audience to understand. The person has offline audience, you can use offline audience to understand what the audience is going to look like, but then, you can use A.I. well, okay? Alright, so uh. Um there, for a second question, you asked me, how are you able to pinpoint a goal for um? Like how are you able to know if it's thirty percent, if it's twenty percent, it's just like your goal for yourself as an individual. If you say you want to read two books, how do you know it's two books you want to read? How, why, like why, like why do you decide to read two books, why do you decide to say it's five books you want to read? Oh yeah, yes, now it's, it's more of the time the business owner may have goals already. Or more of the time, most of the time, the business owner will never have goals. You can say, okay, let's start out with ten percent, let's do this, so that when we achieve something, we can be able to measure it. Okay, so first of all, like I said, try to make the goals as lean as possible, under promise and over deliver is better than over promising. And under delivery, okay, so I feel like these factors, or let's say these two things I just mentioned can be able to give you an insight into how you can put. Percentages into your goals, okay, did I answer your question, please? Tell me when the chat goes, right, we have the next lesson. Alright, so Suzanne, I, I have your, your hand is up, let's get your question. I think Suzanne will be the last one, and the others will be answered on the group.
Okay, thank you so much. My question is, um you were talking about posting on Instagram, when we were talking about Instagram, and you said we need to. Post high-end quality for Instagram posting. Now, my question is, for a startup business, and we probably don't have those um. Um those equipments needed um that we can give you that high-end quality. Either you should post Instagram for the main time till you get to that destination, and my second question is. You're talking about different social media platforms and different behaviors, so um I think there's something called brand identity. In trying to fit in to different platforms. I don't know if you understand.
Yes, 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 I clearly understand, and I love that question a lot, so for your first question. On, your first question says, um when you're starting out on social media and you can't get everything you need, how can you start on the bad? The truth is. Is a way, okay, now, I'm going to use the example of Salem King, I don't know if anybody knows Salem King in here. Salem King is a content creator, when he started out in social, alright, I can see some hands. When he started, when he started out as a content creator, he was facing video content, but then he didn't have that quality phone, so he decided to do white and black. Over time, or should I say for a long period of time, his brand, his brand was repulsed around white and black, and not because he wanted to do it, it not because he wanted black. Or he loved black that much, that was just his own way of trying to still make sure that whatever he turned out were physically. Um were visually appealing, okay? Now, that does not mean you should go do white and black stuff or make your brand around, or make your business white and black, there's always a way. If you don't have a good um camera, or you don't have good lighting, there's naturally, if you feel. The best, the best source of light, or should I say the best lights for video is actually sunlight, so you want to program yourself to make sure that you're filming. At times where the sun is out or the sky is bright, okay, so that it influences. I know that iPhone is no more a big thing like it was back in the day, or should I say good cameras are no more a big thing like they were back in the day, you always have friends. My sister currently has a jewelry business, sorry, not jewelry business, a perfume business, and then lately. She told me that she need, I told her to get on social media, she has done a lot of WhatsApp hacking, in quotes. So I thought I should get to a bigger audience, fish in a bigger place, begin fishing a bigger water, and then she was telling me, oh, my phone's um. My phone speaker is bad, da da da, I'm like, that's not an excuse, you have friends. You can chat with friends for over an hour, you can just with friends for an hour, so why can't they also help you to make your videos in an hour as well? Why can't they be, why can't, why can't you, why can't you put, why can't you exchange something? Why can't you give them something in exchange for the value you want to get, which is their phone to make your videos? So there's always a way, okay, so find a way with these two options I just gave. I feel like with those two options, you definitely be able to achieve something, okay? I don't know if that answered your first question, Suzanne, then moving over to your second question, yes, that's a question I said I love a lot. Because it is very important and it's something that everybody here should know. The fact that you're trying to fit into a platform does not mean that you lose the voice of the brand, most of the brands have a brand style. On being on boarded to any brand, they give you a brand document that officially tells you what their voices like. Some of their voices are inspirational, some of their voices are witty, some of the voices there are just calm, some of the voices are simple. So as much as you're trying to tune into that platform now. Can decide to do it in a different way. When you're tuning into the platform, through your videos, can decide to just tune in in terms of jumping into trends. In terms of on Twitter, let's say there's a question around um finance, and then the brand is about finance. You tune into that conversation by just giving your one or two cents, that could be your own way of tuning into platforms, not entirely being. Because let's say you're on Twitter, you know, oh, sorry, you're on X, you don't have to be witty, you don't have to be sarcastic. There is something that I, I observed lately, or should I say I saw lately about TikTok and N.T.A. TikTok, N.T.A. recently has a TikTok page, I don't know if you guys know, and then currently the. Like the handler of the page has just been, like people know how TikTok can give you very sarcastic comments, so. People have been giving that sarcastic comments on TikTok, where ah, why is your video clearer than your TV, why is your video clearer than your broadcast? And then the handler of TikTok, of the N.T.A. TikTok at the moment is really not taking it fun, so if they say one, she'll say hundred. Literally, she's lashing out on them, so it may come off as, like all the brand, like most of the comment section are like, ah, you don't know who we are, others. But then, that could be what they want to achieve in that moment, they want to just gather their presence, and then it's okay for them to lash out like that. So, in everything you do, or in tuning to a platform, you can tune in with your content, but still preserve your voice, okay? I'll even um put this out there, if you're managing any brand, you're managing any social media, any brand, any business, your personal brand, you should understand the brand voice, it's very, very important. Okay, so thank you so much for putting that down, that out here Suzanne, and I hope I was able to answer your question. So um yeah, that should be all for today.